I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
If you can get up for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody here and welcome our viewers on television.
I'm out here, but I just washed my hands.
And in a moment, I'm going to ask all of you to join with me in a moment of silence as we want to show our respect for and our gratitude to and support Martin Kemble's family in their time of loss. Marty Kemble was a Navy veteran and after coming out of the Navy, served as an elementary school principal and teacher and then came to Plymouth in nineteen eighty, nineteen, I lost the date on that one. Well, worked in Plymouth for eighteen years, first principal at Hedge and then principal at Manomet. So, a great contributor to the educational community in Plymouth, so please join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing no hands, then move to the next agenda item, which is to receive report from our student representatives. We'll start with North.
Hi, guys. This is my first meeting. So, we have a lot going on at North this year. So, we have the picture retakes will take place on Friday, November ninth, and we also have the NHS induction for any new members, which will be Thursday, November twenty-ninth, and it will be held in the Performing Arts Center at seven PM. And we also, March closed on Friday, November second, and report cards will be distributed this Friday, November ninth, and all parents or guardians should expect their students to return home from school on November ninth with their report cards. And this Friday, also on November ninth, we have a Veterans' Day celebration, and it's through the Plymouth North History Department, and the Student Council will host the Veterans' Day Assembly, and the school will honor the members of the Plymouth community that served in the armed forces, and presentations will be held at nine thirty AM, followed by luncheon for the veterans. We also have meet the coaches clearance night coming up this Tuesday, or a week from tomorrow, which will be November thirteenth at six thirty PM in the Performing Arts Center. And on Wednesday, we have our annual Powderpuff game at six PM, and a mission is three dollars, and many of our Plymouth North students are looking forward for a big win during these fun events. And so basically what it is, it's female football players with coaches that are normally football players. And then we also have our annual Dec of Fashion Show. This is our third year putting on this event, and it will be held Thursday, November fifteenth, and the show will begin at seven PM in the Performing Arts Center. Tickets can be purchased at lunches or at the door for five dollars for students and then eight dollars for adults. We also have the Thanksgiving Day Game, and it is North for South, and this year, North is hosting it, and tickets will be on sale starting November fifteenth through Tuesday, November twentieth, and they will be five dollars if you order them at lunch, and then eight dollars the day of the game. The Thanksgiving Day Game, like I said, will be held at North, and it is Thursday, November twenty-second at ten AM, and then also, we will have no school tomorrow. And we also have Spirit Week coming up, which is Tuesday, November thirteenth through Tuesday, November twentieth, and you can get those dates on the Student Council Twitter for what each event is.
Thank you very much, Ruby, and then we'll do South.
Hi. All right, so Plymouth South raised over fourteen hundred dollars with another successful breast cancer awareness fundraiser, and we're donating all those funds to Beth Israel. The Department of Education Commissioner Jeff Riley met with students and staff and toured our school this past Wednesday. We were excited to share with the Commissioner all of our academic and technical programs that we have at South, and he said that he judges schools based on if he would want his children to attend that school, and he said he would certainly want his kids to go to Plymouth South High School. PYDC provided an excellent professional development session for our staff during in-service. Kel McComber and Marielle Paul gave an engaging presentation to our staff on the missions and objections of PYDC. In addition, they have put together a variety of workshops this year at Plymouth South High School for staff and students, which we will share more information as those approach. Our annual college fair took place at Plymouth South High School in the gymnasium on October sixteenth. Over a hundred and twenty colleges, technical institutions, and the US military were in attendance for students. It was very well attended, and early action deadlines have since passed, and some of them are coming up for our seniors, and we're working closely with our guidance counselors to get all those in. And our AP exam payment was due November first, and there's two hundred and fifty-nine AP exams administered to our Plymouth South High School students this year. Our annual Fall Technical Studies Advisory Meetings and Dinner took place on October eighteenth. Members from local industries, colleges, unions, and parents and students met to discuss the future of each individual program as it relates to the post-secondary education opportunities and the educations that exist for our technical students. We want to thank the Central Office Administration and the school committee members who were in attendance, and it was a very successful homecoming weekend. We won our homecoming game, and all Fall captains were recognized at the game along with the homecoming court and their parents. Isabella Freddi and Sean Spiegel were crowned king and queen. And our project Lean the Way juniors are approaching their third year of biomedical program. They received their white lab coats this week, acknowledging their proficiency in the program. Special thanks to teachers, Dr. Mead and Ms. Dunn for all their hard work in the program. And our Theater Guild will be presenting the play A Midsummer Night's Dream, November eighth through November tenth. Each show begins at seven PM. Tickets are eight dollars for adults and five dollars for students. And our golf team won the Division Two South sectional tournament. They moved on to the state championship and finished eighth, put it into a great season. Our cheer competition moves into regionals this week, and we have MCAS ELA retests this Thursday and Friday. Our Plymouth marching band competed extremely well at NESBA this weekend in Lawrence, and our girls soccer team won their game today, and they will move on to the semifinals this Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both for that report. Lot of information. Next item on our agenda is old business. Committee members want to bring up anything from the old business list at this point? Ms. Badger.
I think that we can close the flashing lights one. I thought, I saw that it was still open, and I thought we had closed it previously.
You really want to do that, huh?
Well, yeah. My hope is, I'm thinking really positively that with flashing lights we'll be dealt with.
So it's flashing, I would say.
Yeah, and if they, you know, like I said, if I see it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else under old business? Okay, committee members under new business. Moving now down to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items this evening. I, first of all, like to introduce the new school committee secretary, Peg Grimes. She is here, newly, new resident in the town of Plymouth and new to the Plymouth Public Schools, and Nancy will be working on transition, and we're trying to make that transition last as long as we can. But today's her first day, all the way around, so Peg, welcome, and we have, this is the team, so, welcome. Tomorrow, I think Ruby said tomorrow is a no-school day. Well, it's no-school day because it's an election day, but we also have to remember that it's an opportunity for kids to vote. We do have some high school kids that can vote tomorrow. I think two parents at the table have kids that can vote, but it's also a reminder to the community that your vote does make a difference. I did hear a report this morning on NPR where people were saying that their votes really don't count, so they don't really feel like voting. Let me tell you that your vote counts, and I just want everyone to know that this is the opportunity. It is a right and privilege of people here in this country. We did have a visit from the Commissioner, Commissioner Riley. He came down and was here for about two hours. He did meet with our students and faculty. He wanted to have meetings with students and faculty independently. We weren't in the room. It was a very frank, open discussion, and I think those conversations went very well. He seemed to be very personable. We also had the opportunity to meet with him independently, to talk about Plymouth curriculum and the four-hundredth commemoration, and how our work with the Plymouth Plantation and a publisher to compile a book of the history of Plymouth. So, we are going to be working with a publisher to develop a document that will talk about the history of Massachusetts pre-sixteen-twenty and all the way to current day, and we wanted the Commissioner's office to actually endorse it, the Department of Education, so that is something that we're going to be working on, and we're very excited to be working with a publisher who has developed similar documents for Illinois and Texas. But we will work with them to do the framework and have people from our district, people from Bridgewater State, and also hopefully people from the Department of Education to sit on the table and the writing team to actually look at those benchmarks of historical significance from pre-sixteen-hundred to today. So, that's something that we're going to be working on in the district. We're really excited about that. That's a, that will be a significant accomplishment for the district, but will also be available to schools across the Commonwealth and across the country and across the world. I think that will be very interesting for our students and teachers. I just want to give you an update on Lincoln Street. We are moving along. In tonight's correspondence, you have a letter we received and are continuing to receive donations from private entities to actually help us to paint and refurbish eleven Lincoln Street, but the most important piece that I'd like to announce at eleven Lincoln Street is the contributions of our students from Plymouth North Facilities and Plymouth South High Vocational from the carpentry, plumbing, electrical, you name it. The kids have gone in there and have done a phenomenal job to really prepare that building for us to move into it. So, they have been working in there. That has been their classroom onsite location for the vocational program for the last month and a half, and I think you'll be absolutely pleased with the work that they have done. Just one note, we were in there last week, and there was a young man at North High School, and, you know, the majority of the walls at eleven Lincoln Street are blueboard and plaster, which, if you, any of you have done this kind of work, it's a lost art, and it's an art that, it's a lot different than drywall. You plaster the whole wall, and one of our North High School students, who's extremely skilled, did the plastering in that building, and if you walk in there, it is like glass. And to see the instructor in that program watching the student apply this plaster, and the teacher asking questions on process, that is, that is pretty important stuff. So, the confidence of the students, the, you know, they're going to be doing Mr. Costin's office wall-to-wall paint, every little detail that that office needs, both accounts payable and Mr. Costin's office there, it's completely a hundred percent redone, will be redone by the students in that program, which is, it's really great for our kids to have a lab and to actually know that that's the home of Dr. Campbell. You know, that's, it's the voice of the Plymouth School, so. So, it's pretty neat stuff, really neat. So, I'm really proud. Every time I go in there and see the kids working, it just, it makes our day. I mean, we've been in and out constantly. Mrs. Dargie has been in quite a bit, but I'll tell you what, it is just fantastic to see our kids learning at that kind of hands-on level. We did have a, we've had last, last couple of weeks, some successful opportunities in the district sports. As the kid said tonight, we had a number of our, our school, our school teams reached the postseason, and they've done well. Also want to highlight the drama club over at Drama Program at North. They did a production of Clue this weekend that was outstanding, all accounts that our kids are getting these opportunities to demonstrate their individual proficiency and really highlight that they're performing in our schools and doing a great job. And just last thing, this is part of my goals, but I just want to share something that I received in, from one of our former staff members who does a Sunday School program. So, there's a Sunday School program that they had an activity, and, and their activity was to identify what their This Is Me moment is. So, they, they wrote me what, what, who they are and, and what they believed they looked like and what they really want to be in life. So, I got these cards sent to my office, and it's pretty cool stuff. So, that's what we want, right? We want kids to think about who they are and who they want to be, and the kind of strength that they should have as they go on through their years. So, it's kind of neat, you know? So, with that said, Dr. Sorenson.
Okay. Any questions to Dr. Maestis after his report?
I have a statement. So, I went and actually, probably almost two weeks ago now, stopped by Lincoln, and it's, they're doing a wonderful job. They're, it's amazing to me. It's, you know, going through the, I didn't get to go into like the basement area, but I went on the second and third floor, and just to see that the work, the work they've done is amazing. It's amazing.
Yeah. I, to follow with that, we're going to do a grand opening, and I want to do this grand opening to show off the work and to show what you can do when you put a lot of goodwill together and dedication and the skill of some students, you know? Our staff members that have been there supporting, the students have said, every time we go in there, the kids love it here. They love it here. They love the idea that they are developing the future home of the Plymouth Public Schools, so they really enjoy that.
Just, just a reaction to that, you know, grand openings can be humdrum. Perhaps, perhaps we could feature the students at the grand opening. Forget about dignitaries. Let's feature the students.
No, 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 that's, that's the idea. Well, it's, it's powerful when you see that they, they think that I'm going to sit in my office and make the call for snow, and they're excited to just make that office look, that I'm going to make the call from that office, so they're all, they're all excited for, for me to have my office to make the call.
With a big window, right?
That's right.
Big, right? Wonderful view, yes. Four in the morning. Yeah, four in the morning. Moving to retirements, please.
Yes, we have two retirements to report tonight. Michelle Myers, a cosmetology teacher from South High for twenty-four years in Deana Wood, the second shift custodian for fifteen years at Federal Furnace.
On behalf of Plymouth School Committee, we congratulate these individuals and wish them a happy and successful, a happy retirement.
Thank you for that report. Correspondence, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. We have two pieces of correspondence tonight. A thank you letter from Mr. Costin acknowledging the very generous donation by the George and Mary Agostini Family Foundation in support of the restoration of eleven Lincoln Street facility for the Plymouth Harbor Academy students and for the relocation of district's administrative offices. There's also a letter of thanks from Science Coordinator Allison Riordan to the Medical Director, Dr. Jeffrey Sukor, thank you, of the Mass Maritime Academy, in recognition of his time spent with the students in our biomedical program at Plymouth North High School. Mrs. Riordan recognized Dr. Sukor for the generosity and the experience provided for these students, that include presentation about emergency room design, the Academy's ambulance, and the EMS, emergency medical technicians as well.
Okay, thank you for reading those correspondence. And we have packets on our table for the Thanks for Giving Day information that are going to be sent home, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have the opportunity to partner with the founder of the Thanks for Giving Day Foundation, and this is Mr. Peter Dubay. He will be joining us shortly, but I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Dubay about a month ago to engage with him regarding the idea of thanks for giving. And if we go back several years when Principal Fry was a principal in Barnstable, vice-principal in Barnstable, she actually had the opportunity to work with Mr. Dubay for a thanks-for-giving opportunity back when his children were in high school. And if you fast forward and look at the years of development, Mr. Dubay has created an opportunity to engage families, to think about others, to look at how you introduce the opportunity for children to work with their families on thinking about the needs of others and picking an entity, an organization or an entity that may need some level of support, and how can they go out and develop some donations or support for those organizations? So, tonight, Mr. Dubay is here. We have, I have agreed to have him come tonight and talk to this, to introduce this to the Plymouth community, and it is really centered around an opportunity for families to sit and talk about what giving means and how families can actually support that and pick an organization that their children could actually support. When Mr. Dubay met with me, I relayed a moment that we had here at school committee probably fifteen years ago, when we had some tough economic times and we were making some cuts in the district, and I remember sitting at this table, and there were a couple of youngsters in the crowd with their father. The father came to the table, and under open comment, he wanted to address the school committee to introduce his children, and what his children did is they realized that we were going to make some cuts, and they wanted to help minimize those cuts. So, what his children did is they came upon this idea on their own, and they went to the transfer station and collected cans every weekend for numerous weekends, and they saved up probably around five or six hundred dollars, and they brought a check to the school committee to offer those dollars to the school department to be able to help minimize the cuts. So, when I think about the Thanks for Giving Day opportunity, it is very similar to those two children coming up with an idea and following through with it, and I think that's what the Thanks for Giving Day opportunity really means, and we, we kind of hope that families embrace that and really, it's a mechanism to help that conversation. So, with that said, Mr. Dubay is here, and he'd like to speak to you a little bit, and I hope I didn't say too much.
Good evening and welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. I think back to, I think it was twenty-two years ago, when we did, we had a group of parents come to me, and I've been in fundraising for more than forty years, mostly YMCA and also hospital fundraising, and wherever I get involved with a group or committee, I always get put on the fundraising committee. So, a lot of the clubs and organizations and sports teams at Barnstable High School were looking for a way to raise funds for their particular activities, and they came to me, and I said to them, as long as we all work together, we can make this happen. And so, what happened basically is I went out and got corporate sponsors and promised those corporate sponsors that they wouldn't be hit by every single committee, club, sports team, at least for the next year. So, we raised fifty thousand dollars through corporate donations, and then each, we challenged each of the clubs and teams to go out and get pledges, and we actually had a walkathon in the Cape Cod Mall on Black Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and we showed up at eight o'clock in the morning, and the kids came with their sports uniforms on and what have you, and they walked around for who knows how many laps around the mall, but they ended up raising quite a bit of money. And what really excited me is that the group that raised the most money was best buddies. And it was really heartwarming. So, we did that for a couple of years, but I've been thinking about this concept for a long time, and primarily because most people think about fundraising, and fundraising to me is a reactive thing. Somebody's got a project going on or a campaign, and they're asking you for your support, whereas philanthropy to me is more proactive, working with your children, involving them in your decisions to make gifts, I think is something that not a lot of families do. I actually did this with my daughters when they were little, and I think they turned out pretty good.
They turned out great.
So, I remember when I was in high school, I had a teacher who said to me, if you want to get your message across, tell a story. So, I think you've got your packets there. In the packet, there is a copy of the book that I wrote. It's a children's book. It's geared towards third graders, primarily because third graders, that's the age where the curriculum talks about Thanksgiving, they talk about the Mayflower, which is near and dear to my heart, and they talk about Plymouth and how America started. So, working with this story, basically letting this little boy talk about an issue that he's got with a friend, seeing her go through some family troubles, and then trying to work with his family on how, what he could do, similar to those two little kids who came in with the coins and the check. So, it occurred to me that if I could tell the story and then offer some suggestions, and I call them tools, that anybody could use to, to really strengthen their philanthropy and their giving, and really to create a new family tradition, is what I'm trying to do. So, there are seven tools in the toolbox, and the first tool, of course, is the book, and if you sit and read the, the story with your children or have them read it to you. I had an opportunity last fall to do this at Manomet School. Dr. Frain was kind enough to allow me to work with their parents' group, and under the assistance of Beth Lopes, we had fifteen families who actually went through this process last year, and so we gave them all the information and instructions, and they, they actually did the activity, and we came back after Thanksgiving and listened to what they had to say. And if you've had a chance to go onto my website, we've actually got some video of the parents talking about their experience, and for me, it was very rewarding. So, now I'd like to take that program system-wide and involve as many children in the school system as possible, and we'll see where it goes. I've been fortunate, I've been introduced to Emily Goognan, and.
Goognan, she's right over there.
Oh, there she is. And she's done a terrific job. So, our focus is going to be on putting together a social media campaign, and the first post actually came out today, and it was very good. So, we're going to be focusing using Facebook primarily, and we have a series of five posts that will go out, and each one will hopefully garner some more activity in getting people involved. And, you know, I've known Gary because we've, I was involved with Plymouth Four Hundred as well, and one of the programs that I enjoy the most is illuminate Thanksgiving.
Fascinating, yep.
And that is actually one of the tools, the toolkit. So, one of the things we're hoping to do is to get as many people to attend that event this year as possible and, and get them to, to be engaged. And Michelle Pecorero has been a huge supporter. I am also working with the folks at Plymouth Plantation to restore the Mayflower, and folks, Ellie Donovan has been a terrific supporter of this program, and so, working together, hopefully we can get the awareness raised. That's really what I'm after, is raising awareness, and I'm not promoting any particular charity, although the last page is about the Mayflower, which is, like I said, near and dear to my heart, and the restoration project that's going on, and when she comes back in 2020, I'll be very pleased. But there is an opportunity in the future, as this thing takes hold, to actually use the program as a fundraiser for the individual schools, if they wish, or other community organizations, and so, as it starts to develop, I think fundraising could be a byproduct of what we're trying to do. So, other than that.
Committee members with any questions or observations? Okay, Ms. Hunt.
I just, I think this is great. My kids are older now. I wish I had this when I was, they were younger. My youngest, when she was in middle school, they did a fundraiser here where they, you know, had the bucket, and she came home and she said, Mom, I'm, I'm the top fundraiser in the school. And I said, what, really? And I said, how much did you donate? You remember the story. It's like a hundred and eighty dollars, and I said, how did you collect that much money? And her birthday is in October. She's like, oh, I just emptied my wallet and put it in the bucket. And I was like, what? But then I said, are you sure you wanted to do, and she's like, they, they needed it more than me, so, but it's good because this is kind of teaches them the background of what it means and, and what it's going to, instead of just going into school, opening your wallet and throwing some money, you know? Like, I think this is great, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to still make my kids listen to this story and they're all adults, so.
My daughters are reading it to, and using it with my grandchildren now, so.
Ms. Badger.
Pay it forward.
I was just going to say, this is excellent. I'm a fundraiser myself and I will probably make my seniors in college read part of this, the ones who are working with me on their senior class campaign, because, you know, a lot of them don't have the understanding of philanthropy and that's what we, that's what I try to do every day. So, it's great to start them as young as possible.
One of the things, activities that I'm really excited about is Emily is working with the athletic director to have the football team and cheerleaders read this book to classrooms. I guess it's the...
Monday the nineteenth.
Monday the nineteenth. So, you know, I think it's going to be really good. We'll get some nice pictures from that, some video and I'm looking, really looking forward to that. And we're also going to be at the, at the Americas Hometown Parade and we'll be doing a book signing at that point and hopefully folks will come by and get a copy of the book and the toolbox and put it to work.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming here and explaining it to us. Great program.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Let the girls, I said, hi.
Our first school improvement plan this evening would be Hedge. Dr. Mastis.
Yes, tonight we have Principal Wilson. She is here to present her mid-cycle school improvement plan and she is joined by Nicole Manfredi, a teacher at Hedge Elementary. So, welcome and thanks for showing up.
Thank you. I know. Is this on? We do have some other folks that are trying to get here this evening, but we're going to just start and if they join us, we'll just hop in. So, Nicole and I are going to be juggling a little bit of some of the plans that we had. We made a plan and now we're going to make some adjustments as we move forward. So, our school council is in transition, so we have some folks that just completed their two-year cycle and we're in the process of recruiting to get more members. So, we are fairly small at this point. And one of our school council members just had a baby on Friday, so she's not going to be with us this evening. And she has passed the torch off to Abigail Greenwood, who's one of our teachers who was not able to join us this evening. But thank you for having us. We're very excited to share some of the progress we've made at Hedge Elementary School. And I decided to put these pictures up as our introductory because this is one of our favorite moments, is when we invite our seniors back to Hedge School to celebrate their success and where it all started, which is at our elementary school, at Hedge Elementary School. And then in celebration with our seniors, we're very excited to bring our kindergarten students back. So, there on the screen are our two kindergarten classes this year and then our seniors that graduated last year. So, we are going to continue that tradition. So, a little bit about Hedge. This year, we have one hundred and eighty-one students in a combination of eleven classrooms in grades K through five. So, we did move on our large cohort of students in fifth grade last year and we had a small group of first graders last year, so we were able to condense them into one class, allowing us to bring back our kindergarten students from West Elementary School, which is great for families and it's great for us as well. If we have a growth in our second grade classroom for next year, we would continue to be able to maintain our kindergarten students at Hedge. We would just dismantle our music room and our technology would need to go back into the classroom and music would need to go back into the gym. So, that makes it tricky as a building, but we would be able to maintain the kindergarten students. We have fifty-six staff members, full-time and part-time. Majority of our staff members are part-time. So, the number looks large, but you think about it, they're mostly part-time. So, we have about twenty-two student, staff, from custodians to secretary's staff, to nurse, to teachers who are full-time. We are a school-wide Title I school, so we receive a lot of federal funding to help us with our school on a day-to-day basis. Twenty-eight percent of our students receive, English is their second language. And sixteen of those students are receiving English as a second language instruction. Seventeen point seven percent of our students are identified with special needs and are receiving special ed services or receiving accommodations through 504 plans. Fifty-five point eight percent of our students are identified as economically disadvantaged and because our numbers are fairly high, we have been granted a grant to provide free and reduce, free lunch to all of our students. So, no matter if they qualify for free or reduced lunch, all of our students receive free breakfast and lunch on a daily basis. Makes it quickly, we can go quickly through our lunch line. New to Hedge this year is our kindergarten. They're back again. We also added a part-time English learner teacher to help us instruct that increasing number of English learners that I just mentioned. And we have a new EL classroom and that's our new classroom up there on the slide. It's up on the second floor of the south side, which is the Cherry Street side. And our carpenter did an amazing job. He actually did molding, he made the molding and the woodwork to match the existing building. So, you know, our building was built a hundred and eight years ago. So, he made it look, you wouldn't even think that that room hadn't been there originally. So, if you're in the area, I'd love to show it off to you, it's beautiful. I'm going to take us through goal one and then Nicole's going to move on to goal two and then we're going to toggle back and forth through some of the slides. But our school improvement plan is very comprehensive, but tonight we want to highlight some pieces of it, not everything. And but if you do have specific questions, please feel free to jump in and ask us a question anytime. So, one of the things we always start with is our academic progress with our students in trying to get our students to meet and exceed the expectations on the MCAS exam. So, I'm going to start with that and then we'll move forward through the rest of our presentation. So, here on the slide, you'll see that there is two layers. The first layer is our 2017 MCAS scores. And then halfway through, you'll see our 2018 MCAS scores. And then I put three colors to help explain what all these numbers mean. So, green means that that cohort of students in that particular grade level for that subject, they exceeded the district, the state average. Yellow means that they made progress from the prior year, but they did not exceed. And then red means that there was a decline. So, our trend right now is that our third grade students do very well in the last couple of years. They've gone above the state and district average on their meeting or exceeding the target for math and ELA. And when you look at grade four, you'll see that they, they made a twelve-point increase in their achievement scores. Grade four did have a significant decline last year, so we're digging deep into how that, what happened there and we're working on addressing those needs. And then grade five, again, they made a significant increase of achievement, but they still are not where we want them to be. So, when we look at our school improvement plan goal, which is that fifty-two percent of our students at the end of this year will meet or exceed the expectation based on MCAS, we're very close to meeting that goal. So, last year, we were about thirty-nine percent of our students and this year, we're up to forty-eight percent. So, we feel confident that we're going to meet those goals. Now, when you take, when you look at our school globally, based on our school report card, our students actually exceeded the target that the state set for us, which we were very excited for. However, we had that, that group of children, particularly in fourth grade, those, that red zone there, that didn't make the growth that they were expected to meet and it brought our growth percentile down. So, that, although that that happened, we were very excited to share that we are in the middle in performance in, for the Plymouth schools. For the last eight years, we've been the lowest performing school in Plymouth and now there we are, we're up there with the sixth performing school.
Did you say you wanted questions as you went along?
Yes, please do.
Could you bring that?
This one right here? Sure.
I want to ask you a question. Maybe I'm misinterpreting it, so it's up to me if I am. But those, in 2017, those math students were fifty-four percent exceeding. Now, though, in 2018, those same students are now fourth graders.
Correct.
So, it, so the kid's ability stayed the same and the same thing occurs again when you look at math from grade four to grade five. So, in both cases, the students remain the same, but the scores go down. From my, from my sort of uninformed position, that would tell me it's more of a curriculum problem than a student problem, because it is the same students.
It's not all the same students. So, one thing that we have to think about is Hedge is a very transient community and so that cohort of students are not all represented in that, in that score. So, there might be some, there is a strong group of students that are there, but there are some students that might not be there and then there's some new students that were included in that data as well. So, what we'd have to do is we would have to break it down by individual students and then look at the data that way, which we have done. And there is still a decline. And when you look at the elementary schools across Plymouth, you will see that all, there's seven out of the eight elementary schools that have that trajectory where they do well in third grade and then they reduce in fourth, they reduce in fifth. And, you know, some of the work that we've done when we've looked at that...
That actually supports my concern that it's a curriculum problem more than it is a student achievement problem. Dr. Mastis or Dr. Campbell?
Just to go along with Kristin's transient comment, we did some number, some data crunching a while back and there is a high number of students at Hedge Elementary that don't go through their entire elementary education at Hedge. So, there's a lot of turnover with families in that particular school. So, it's very difficult to see long-term trends. I think for a couple of years, you see it, but when they go off and do a little bit later, their time within the district, it makes it kind of difficult to look at that cohort, which is something that we've, we've begun to look at.
Yeah, if we could, if you could look at at least individual students, because anonymously, of course, but student A, over those two years, and student B, you probably get a pretty good group of kids that are the same kids.
You do. So, when we, when we looked at our school improvement plan the last cycle, we decided to only track the students, when we're looking at the Fountains Penel Benchmark Assessment System, we only tracked the students that have been with us for those complete two years. So, last time, when we reached, we looked at our goal, seventy-five percent of our students were reading at or above grade level by the time we ended our cycle. So, we had raised our goal to be higher than that. So, we do recognize that and so we're trying to track those students. But when you're looking at students, it's really important, when you're looking at how we're going to improve academic achievement, which is one of our components of this goal one, is to really look at the individual students and identify the skills and the needs that they need and then target instruction based on that. And that's forever changing, every cohort of students, the students are all very different and need different interventions. So, that, that brings us to, you know, why did we have the success? Although it's not the success that we would, we are, we want, we're getting there, but it is, part of it is part of our response to intervention program that we've implemented with fidelity at Hedge Elementary School, which is identifying students based on our district assessments and all of those pieces.
Any other questions on this? Go ahead, Ms. Badger.
But I think just to piggyback on what your question initially is, if it is across the district, is there a curriculum thing that we need to look at?
Yeah, I really, as I said in my first presentation, I don't want people to feel like, they said, don't compare, let's not compare past years to the most recent years. That came from the department, if you remember that in my, that wasn't, that wasn't my message, that was a message from the department. We are going through this transition, so let's not get overly concerned. We look at that constantly. If I felt that we had a curriculum issue, I certainly would bring that up and we would be addressing it. But I feel confident that we don't have, it's a, it's an evolution.
Trustment.
And I think we need to look at that. And that being said, we continuously look at that, we're looking for those trends. We follow cohorts through. And we also do, what Mrs. Wilson is saying is, you know, looking at the students that have been with us and when you extract the transient students, we have a responsibility to those students because we have to try to fill those gaps and see where they come into us. And sometimes they come and they go and they come back and they, so... But for the students who are with us, we really need to look at how they do from grades three through grade eight and then again in grade ten. So, we do that constantly with ELA, math, science. So, I, but I do feel confident that we don't have a curriculum issue.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
No problem.
Good job.
So, thinking about the success at Hedge School, one of the big pieces that we have done this past cycle is our inclusive practice model, where we've, we've fully created an inclusive environment and we've, we've put all of our special ed and support staff into the classroom where we're doing co-teaching model. Although some students are removed from the classroom for interventions, it's very, it's very small amount of students and it's based on the, what's best for the student at that time. So, you can't have a successful inclusive model of co-teaching without co-planning. So, we've put a lot of things in place to allow that time for teachers to get together. Mrs. Manfredi is going to be talking a little bit more about that as we move forward, but we have created a schedule where teachers can meet at least once every six days because we have kindergarten back. So, we used to be able to meet every day, once every week, but now we have a rotation to be able to get grade-level teachers and support teachers. So, that includes our ELL teacher, our special ed teachers, our reading teachers, our Title I teachers, our, so our guidance staff as well, to meet and to be able to look at data, look at assessments and talk about individual students and needs that, interventions and programs. It's great collaboration and without it, we wouldn't be able to make the progress that we are making with students. So, we're doing that planning together and then we're also flooding grade levels with support. So, we've, we have reading blocks and math blocks and we're taking our interventionist staff and we're putting them into certain grade levels and we're dividing students in small groups based on skills, review that they're needed, needing, to be able to address those academic needs. We also are working with our philosophy of our responsive classroom approach and universal design for learning by providing our students with academic choice, which allows them to be independent learners. And Mrs. Manfredi will be talking more about our universal design for learning initiative that we, we have as well. One of the areas that we need to continue to work on is our teacher questioning and prompting, being able to have conversations with students that will be able to allow them to be inquisitive learners and be able to think beyond the literal components of reading and math and be more inferential. So, those are things that we'll be working on this year.
So, one of our goals is to increase family engagement and this is just a slide showing some of the events that we've had throughout the school year. The first photo is our whole school art show that also has a performance component where every grade has a small performance that they practice and then takes place when we invite parents in. The second slide is the first grade animal project. The third slide is the fourth grade, My Little Island. On the bottom left there, that is the grade one poetry celebration. It's hard to see from up there, I'm looking at my notes. The bottom middle slide is the grade three wax museum. And then that final slide is the, is that grade one, the animal reports?
That one's grade three.
Grade three animal reports there. And so, those are just culminating projects where parents and families are invited in and to celebrate with their students.
So, we felt that it was really important for students to be able to celebrate their work, to give them purpose, as we all, we all hear kids saying, why do we have to do that? And sometimes when students have a purpose and they know that they're going to be celebrating their work with their families, they're much more engaged in the work. So, as a building, we've all committed to doing at least one family celebration on curriculum, but a lot of teachers do several, do more than that. And they also do celebrations within the school themselves. They might not necessarily invite family in, but they'll invite other grade levels to come in and celebrate as well. Another part of our goal for academic achievement was a new thing that we tried that was very successful, which was Career Day. So, what we did, again, with that philosophy of students wanting to have a purpose to do well in school, we thought it was important for students to start seeing different types of careers that they can, they can strive for. So, we invited some community members that came. We had five members come for our first Career Day. We had a vet technician, a singer-songwriter. We had two high school students that received scholarships to high school. And we had, what was that?
Scholarships to college.
Scholarships to college, thank you. Not high school, they finished that. And then we had a firefighter come in as well. And they did a very brief panel discussion with the students, introducing themselves and how they got to where they were today and what they needed to do to get there. And then they broke out into small groups and they had tables and they had different artifacts and materials that are correlated to their jobs and they spent time in small groups with the students, talking about their, their path and how they got to where they were and students got... And students got to ask questions and it was, it was really a lot of fun. So, we found it to be a success and we're hoping to do it again this year. So, that was our first annual Hedge School Career Day.
So, in the spirit of healthy academic competition, we spent a lot of time planning, talking and planning about this project. We did a Battle of the Books Reading Incentive Program that took place over grades three, four, and five. We had a selection of ten books. The students were charged with reading as many books as they could. And then, as they were reading, keeping track of key details and character traits and important parts of the stories. And then, in May, we had a Family Feud-style trivia where the students went against each other, team to team, and had a little trivia contest. And it was so much fun. And the, the younger students were actually the audience. And we were concerned that they would kind of not be interested. They had such a great time, it was so much fun. The kids loved it. Most kids who participated read nearly every book. They were really into it. And we're bringing it back this year?
Yeah, we're bringing it back this year.
It was really fun, it was a great time.
And then, up there, we also have our annual Big Shaboozie in third grade for our multiplication facts. And then, up in the right-hand corner, we're still doing academic awards and good citizenship awards. And we're doing those three times a year based on our, the report card cycle. So, Battle of the Books is a national program. So, we're able to purchase the questions from the Battle of the Books and they give us the list. And then, we purchase the books for students to borrow. So, we provide five titles of each book and they can rotate them through. And we have some in the library as well.
So, circling back to the PLC component, we have, as Kristin said earlier, our, our schedule rotates every six days. So, we typically meet with our, our teaching team once every six school days. And that gives us an opportunity to do co-planning and talk about RTI and things like that. Before each meeting, we've established a PLC agenda. So, we kind of talk among our group and decide what our focus is for the week and the kinds of things we need to work on. And then, make notes in that agenda. And then, anything that's, that needs to be addressed, Kristin will add into that agenda and we'll just kind of chip away at that as we go along. It's worked really well. It gives us that time to meet together as a team, it's really necessary. The leadership team is a group of about, I would say, ten staff members or so. And our primary focus is academic, academic achievement. So, we're looking at data. And then, we're setting a course towards the goals that we, the specific goals that we've identified throughout the building. Tier-one inclusive academy, I feel like I have PTSD from this. This is a multi-year academy of which I am a part of, Kristin as well. And we focus on the instructional needs of all students using culturally relevant pedagogy and universal design. That's a huge focus, this is a big commitment. We're traveling to Marlboro every ten or twelve weeks or so, meeting with Katie Novak, and it's very intensive. I personally have learned more in this academy than I think I ever learned in undergrad or graduate school. And as a result of that, so, I have become the UDL coach. And I'm still kind of finding my way. But my purpose is to follow the comprehensive framework to kind of guide me on the facilitation of bringing UDL to the school and bringing those inclusive practices to school, which really is based on clear goals and student choice. So, it's been kind of amazing. It's a lot, but it feels good. And I, I get to practice it in my own classroom and it just, it's a really good fit. It feels good. Literacy walks are just that, we're welcoming teachers in from other buildings and just kind of to check in on practices and ideas and sharing strategies. And we've had teachers come to our building. And I know that there's a plan in place for us to go to visit other schools. And it's not in an observation fashion, it's really just to kind of share ideas. Because when we get together informally, we find that we're always saying, "Oh, that's such a neat idea, I never thought of, you know, presenting it that way." And so, this gives us the opportunity to really just kind of window into other people's classrooms and strategies and, and things like that. And then, workshops, we have several teachers who have facilitated workshop. I've done a workshop on technology, professional development session. We have another teacher who's done PD on responsive classroom, morning meetings. So, we're really trying to encourage our staff to be more involved in that piece and the instructional learning part of it.
So, as the goal is to embrace leadership within the school community, you can see that there's a lot of, Nicole's really embracing some of the leadership opportunities for us. A piece of the Tier-One Inclusive Academy, which is a four-year commit with the Department of Education, they're funding everything for us. And they have speakers from around the world coming and doing Skype sessions with us. And they're giving us free resources, you know, some, some books. And they're giving us all of the materials that we would need to do, book groups. They're giving us a lot of professional development materials that we're able to share with the rest of the school. So, some of the work that we're getting from the Tier-One Academy, we're sharing with the other elementary principals as well, which is also being shared at the high school level. I know Dr. Campbell just showed a piece the other day to some of the administrators. So, it's a great resource for us. We, we worked with a, they call them technical advisors. So, she was a, Dr. Kazna is the superintendent out in Western Mass. And she helped us create our Tier-One implementation plan. And one of the areas that is not fully addressed in our school improvement plan that we will be next, next cycle is working on instructional practices for our English language learners. So, a lot of our goals are based on working with UDL, with our EL learners, which happens to be the theme for this year at the Tier-One Academy. So, we're really excited for, for that.
And I add, I forgot, I had some notes on some of the modules, the Tier-One modules, which I feel like are important and will give you insight into what the academy really is focused on. And just a few of the modules include customizing the learning experiences of all students, building comprehension through personal connections, supporting all students to sustain effort and persistence through high-quality Tier-One instruction, that's key. And then, designing authentic assessments with multiple options for student expression.
So, the other, the third goal of our school improvement plan is working on our tiered system of approach for social-emotional learning. So, our last cycle, we really spent, as I mentioned this evening, a lot of time on our response to intervention protocols for English and math, for reading, writing, and math. This year, we're, we're trying to establish a, a tiered system of support for our social and emotional health. So, this is a, this image up here on the screen came to us from the academy. And it's that, in the middle, it's, the pyramid is shaped as a schoolhouse. And so, when we're looking at the three tiers, we're looking at the bottom, Tier-One, as our foundation. And then, the other two layers, as, as we're moving up, is providing support to, to students that might need a little bit more. But this lens that we're doing with this school is our social-emotional learning. So, looking at our Tier-One instruction, what we did as a school is we looked at, what are we already doing to meet the needs of all students at the Tier-One level? What are all kids getting in regards to social-emotional learning? And then, we were charged with what do, what are some students getting at the Tier-Two level? And then, what is a smaller cohort of students getting at the, at the Tier-Three level? And we, we wrote, we put that down in writing. So, we're looking at Tier-One and we made a commitment to what Tier-One looks like at Hedge School. So, the responsive classroom approach for our community and culture building is what we've committed as part of our Tier-One. We sent all of our specialists, our five specialists, to a one-day workshop last year so that they had some training targeted to what it's like in a, in a specialist classroom, which is different than the general ed setting. This year, a majority of our teachers attended a four-day advanced training, which is the second course for responsive classroom. They did that over the summer, which has, really, it's when you, when you watch it in action, you can see how far teachers have grown from attending that four-day training. We have a representative from responsive classroom coming out this month to do an assessment for us, an implementation assessment, to see how we're doing in our implementation process. They did this after our last course to give us feedback of what we can do to, to enhance our approach. We also re-implemented our Second Step curriculum. We did that as a district, but we've done that at Hedge School. And this year, we've committed that every classroom will teach all the lessons. That's our goal. Everyone's going to teach all the lessons this year. And then, there's different layers of the implementation of Second Step. But that was our goal for this year. Next year, we will really work on creating it as a, as a school community. However, I am segueing the Second Step unit themes into my whole-school meetings once a month so that they're hearing that language as a whole school. And then, as part of our Tier-Two, oh, go back to Tier-One, we also committed to our guidance support staff to be in every classroom at least once a week. So, either a guidance teacher or a school psychologist is teaching an additional lesson to each children on social, social-emotional needs. So, all of our students are getting all of that. And then, Tier-Two is for some students who might need a small lunch group or a, some, some counseling or some strategy work. We created a perspective-taking group for some students. We have a self-regulation group for some students. So, those are for some students at the Tier-Two level. And then, at the Tier-Three level, we have some very targeted and very intensive programs for some of our kids. And that could be behavior plans with our behaviorists that works with us. It could be some intense counseling for students that might need some very intense social-emotional work temporarily as they're able, as they're navigating some stressors in their lives at that time. So, we put that down all in writing. And our next step that we need to work on this year is we need to draft a written, draft a written protocol for students that are receiving additional interventions. And we also would like to pilot a screening tool. So, Nathaniel Morton is working with their social-emotional coach and they've identified a screening tool that they would like to use. And it happens to be the same screening tool that our committee identified that we would like to use. So, we would like to pilot that this year and see what type of data that provides for us as we move forward with this goal.
So, as Kristin mentioned previously, responsive classroom is our Tier-One approach to our social-emotional protocol. Responsive classroom, I'm not sure how familiar you are with this, but it's not a program, it's actually an approach. And it integrates academic and social-emotional skills to create an environment where students can do their best learning. So, in every classroom, you'll see things like class rules that were actually created, brainstormed and created by the students, driven by the teachers. But those rules are created as a class, so there's some ownership there. And you create a class contract the students sign. And so, you reflect back on those, those rules throughout the year. There's logical consequences that you'll see posted in every classroom. Every classroom has a take-a-break space and that was ruled out very clearly. There was a letter that went home to parents explaining that take-a-break is not a punishment, but it's an opportunity for students to kind of just do that, whether they're feeling frustrated or angry or, or concerned about something. We modeled this explicitly at the beginning of the year. Teachers continue to model this by taking a break ourselves. We don't take it nearly as much as we should, but it's there. Every classroom also has a hopes and dreams area where students kind of do some reflection on what they're looking forward to in the school year. Morning meeting is a huge component of responsive classroom. That's where we come together as a classroom community. There are four parts to morning meeting, it's very structured. There's a greeting, an activity, a share, and a morning message. And most often, the morning message includes an academic component. And then, there's a closing circle at the end of the day where you come together again as a community and you do something like peak and pit, where you share your, your high point and your low point of your day. Or my class on Fridays, we come together and do class concerns where they're able to voice their concerns anonymously. We talk about whether it's still a concern. And we do some restorative practices together where if there's a problem that continues to happen, the children work together to come up with solutions to solve those problems. So, these are things that when you visit Hedge, you will see in every classroom. Oh, this is me again, somebody threw me under the bus. Okay. So, I know that you're familiar with our PBIS practices. We're continuing with that initiative to improve the social, emotional, and academic outcomes for students. And Jan, I'm sorry, in September, every year, we have a very extensive rollout where we have a rotating schedule. Every student in the building visits every part of the building. And we talk about expected behavior in the bathroom, in the hallway, in the, on the playground, in, in the classroom. And that's explicitly modeled. We revisit that again in January because we find that that is when students often forget their expectations. We go through that again. Those are the posters that you'll see throughout the building. The bottom corner there is a picture of pizza with the principal. And that's, we have a hedge ticket incentive program where students show, they go above and beyond expected behavior because we don't want to reward them for what's expected. They earn a hedge ticket, they get the opportunity to have pizza with their principal. The top picture there is Dojo, which I feel like everyone must be familiar with at this point. I might be a Dojo representative. It's a great program, it's also a great tool for communication. But that's a great positive incentive program. And then, we have our, new this year is our Hedge Kid Experiences. So, in prior years, we would take those hedge tickets, put them in a basket. And Kristin will pull a few tickets and kids would, would pick from a prize box. And we kind of wanted to get away from that. We wanted to be more experience-based. So, we've decided that every staff member in the building, and they've, and this has been volunteer, volunteer-based, will come up with an experience throughout the class, throughout the year. And students get to, she'll pull a few tickets at every meeting, every whole-school meeting. But the students have the opportunity, when they earn a hedge ticket, to put it in the envelope of that month's experiences. So, for instance, my experience this month is we're making butter that we'll be bringing to our feast. So, if student earns a hedge ticket, he can choose to either put it in my experience or the other two. And then, come meeting time, she'll pull out those tickets. And it just seems more personal and the kids, the connection is there. So, instead of doing just trinkets, we're really encouraging the experiences and those relationships between the staff and the students. And that is not just teachers, that is parents, custodial staff, secretaries, cafe staff, everyone's involved in this. So, the kids are kind of excited to do silly things like sweep the floor with Mr. Wood and things like that. I don't know what the bottom, I can't.
The bottom one is, is one of the experiences where the students played games with the fifth-grade teachers.
Oh, right, those are board games, yeah.
And you can't tell, but the two fifth-grade teachers are on the floor with the first graders in the back. They're having just as much fun as the children are. So, this month, they're making butter, they're playing basketball, and they're going on a nature walk. Those are the three things that they were able to earn. So, it's been, it's been very well-received. And we got that idea, Katie Tessitore, one of our former school council members, she and I traveled to a school in Springfield that had a very strong PBIS program. And we were able to get that idea from them. So, we're very excited to incorporate that into Hedge. Our last goal is to increase engagement of all Hedge families in the life of the school. One of the ways that we've been tracking school engagement is through our open-house attendance. It was really high, that was the, the first year I came in 2014 is when we were in the ninety percent. They probably all wanted to come out and meet me, make sure I was okay. And then, it went down after that. And so, we've been trying to continue to work to, to increase that attendance at, at open house. And that's, that's based on individuals. And so, when I looked at it this year, I looked and there were some families that had multiple children. So, if I, if one family doesn't attend, that's four kids, that isn't, that isn't part of that. So, the other piece that we're doing is we, we've really felt that we needed to provide varied opportunities for our families because what works for one might not work for others. So, that's what we're going to talk about for tonight, is the different opportunities that we've provided for families to be engaged in their child's learning. And when I looked at all of the attendance sheets that we take, we track whenever we do a, a school event, we, we have people sign in. We're really in the high eighties of, of students having at least one family member attend a family event. So, when we look, when we really looked at our data, we, we're really doing well in family engagement, we're getting them in the door. So, this is our, our Field Day Truck Pull. And, and those are all of our parent volunteers in the tie-dye t-shirts that are pulling the fire truck right there. We talked about our curriculum celebrations already. And we're going to bring you through to some of our school events that we've done. New to us this year is, is to get the community involved is we have a group of retired folks from the Zion Lutheran Church, which is a church right around the corner from us. And they're coming into our classrooms three times a week and reading with some of our kindergarten and first-grade students. So, that's new to us this year and it's been really great. We, we did a, I did a training with them. I taught them how, you know, gave them some ideas on how to engage a child in book and some early literacy skills that they might want to work with. And then, they have notebooks that they write notes to the teachers and they have a checklist. And it, it's very organized and it's going really well. So, we were excited about that. Do you want to do school events?
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just looking to see, so this, this is just a slide referencing our grandparents' day, which is very well attended. The top corner there is our Thanksgiving feast, which is the highlight of our school year that's coming up soon. That's one of my favorite days of the year we have. I don't know what the middle picture.
Invitation's coming soon.
What is the middle one?
The middle is our enrichment day.
Oh, okay. So enrichment day is, happens in March and teachers come up with some sort of hands-on project that's tied to learning in some way. Students select their first few choices and they spend the day rotating through workshops. And it's, it's multi-age, so first graders are mixed in with third graders and that's a really great time. The bottom picture is our tug of war at our field day. And then we have some Halloween, we just did the Halloween Howl, which happens right before the Halloween every year. And I think the bottom left is a picture of the school play. Yep. So this year we're doing, it's a magic treehouse pirates, some sort of pirate themed play that will be happening in February, so they're very excited.
So just trying to create different opportunities for families to get in. So families can participate and do workshops for our enrichment day. And as well as getting, they always, families love to come to family events. So any of the time they can bring their child and have some fun, those are the events that we're really getting a lot of folks to, to join. So we try to have at least one family event per month to, so that we can continue having those relationships with families.
Oh, this is, this is the famous beach day. So this is a tradition that has been, is this year four, year five?
Four, I think.
We, we, as a school, we gather together and we walk from Hedge to Nelson Park. It's a very organized, it's very structured. We walk together as a school. We get down to Atlantic Street. We walk the bike path. When we get there, there's a schedule of events where certain grades go off and play kind of in the sand and so, other students go off and play in the playground, in the field and we have lunch together. And it's generally really hot and the walk back is torture, but they absolutely love it. And it's the, it, it's such a, it's really become kind of an amazing tradition at our school and it's a lot of work to put together, but they really, really love it and they get to come together as a commu, school community and, and just do fun things at the beach and appreciate where they live and appreciate that they're a community school and can walk to these places. So it's a really good time.
And they love exploring the critters that are on the beach. I put a picture of the crabs up there because a lot of our kids had never seen a crab. So it was a really great learning experience for them while, while they were there. And then we have some folks that have embraced this trip every year and some of our Atlantic Street folks create a water station for us on the way back and they have a little sprays, a spritzer station for us to go through. And it's, some of our PTA folks are there as well, providing water for us on the way back. So it's been, and again, it's another opportunity for us to have families participate and get involved. And here's another, our other thing is our community garden. This year we really embraced the learning opportunities that are provided through our community garden. We use, we, I worked with each grade level and each grade level picked what they wanted to plant. And Terra Cura helped design the plant, the beds for me and gave me the seeds and all of the materials that I would need. And then we went out as grade levels and we planted with the children and I showed them how to, to use rulers and yardsticks to be able to create twelve foot, twelve-inch grids to be able to plant and how some plants need more room to grow. And then we watched them grow over the years. We had some beautiful sunflowers this year and tomatoes, of course, for our tomato initiative. And radishes came up really great. So first grade loved this book on radishes, so we planted radishes for first grade. And again, the community got involved in caretaking for that over the summer. So that's a, a little bit and a lot, and I thank you all for listening to our presentation tonight.
Excellent, excellent. A lot of information.
Good job.
A lot of information. Pictures were great. Uh, committee members, additional comments, observations?
Good job. Thank you. Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a program update.
Dr. Mastis.
Yes, tonight we have Arthur Montron who's here to provide a facility program update. Arthur has prepared a presentation for you regarding the facilities department and following that, he will provide information relative to the capital outlay recommendations that he will present to the town and that will go forward to town meeting ultimately. So tonight, I'd like to welcome Arthur and he's back for another presentation.
Good evening, Arthur.
This is the program update for the facility service office. As you'll see from the first slide, we are now at 11 Lincoln Street. We've moved a couple of times this year. Finally settled into one spot. This department is a department of eighty-seven full-time equivalents. We have one secretary, facility scheduling coordinator, six skilled craftsmen, twelve head custodians, fifty-one custodians and thirteen maintenance floaters, along with myself and my assistant.
Can you just break down the, the skilled craftsman?
The skilled craftsmen are two electricians.
Okay.
Two HVAC technicians, a plumber and a carpenter. And the sil, six skilled craftsmen save the district quite a bit of money every single year. I mean, they, they really do a yeoman's job of keeping up with our buildings and, and getting the maintenance done that needs to be done. We have a total of fourteen buildings. A total approximately one million four hundred and thirty-one, thirty-one thousand square feet, three hundred and twenty-nine acres of land. And our buildings range in age from now eighteen ninety-two to twenty seventeen, thanks to Lincoln Street.
Oh, yeah, Lincoln Street.
So needless to say, each building is kind of unique in their needs. The custodial staff within the buildings, within each building, take quite a bit of pride of ownership in their own individual building. And they do everything they can do to maintain it, to keep the staff safe and happy and do whatever needs to be done. Some of the things that we do is to maintain a safe and clean, comfortable place for students and staff. We maintain the three hundred and twenty-nine acres of ball fields, grass and shrubbery and parking lots. We perform the snow removal for the district, which unfortunately is coming upon us pretty quickly. Waste removal and recycling efforts. Supplies and materials throughout the district. Backfill absenteeism throughout the district, which is done really with four floaters in my office. Gets a little complicated at times, but we seem to pull it off. Administer the, the operating budget for the school district as well as the capital outlay budget that you'll hear about in a couple of minutes. We maintain forty-eight various vehicles in the fleet, from school buses to automobiles. Monitor the work order requests and perform custodial and maintenance by the tradesperson We do the scheduling oversight for all of the building use throughout the district. And that's really it in a nutshell. What I'd like to say is that, as I said earlier, the men and women of this department take a lot of pride in what they do. They come to work every day. They do the things, a lot of the things that nobody else wants to do or what have you. Anything from a paper jam in a copy machine to a child that gets sick in a classroom. So I mean, they don't complain, they just go in, they do their job and they do a great job. And I just want to take a minute to thank all of them for what they do for the school district and the taxpayers of Plymouth each and every day. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, observations? Ms. Badger.
I know, I think we ask this question maybe every year at different times during the year, but you mentioned the recycling program. What are we doing currently? I'm sorry.
We are recycling paper and cardboard. We have dumpsters in all of the schools. So we collect within the building and get it out to the dumpsters and, and between my truck driver and the DPW, they're removed and recycled. Unfortunately, the, the profits from recycling have gone way down over the past few years. Plymouth is basically single stream recycling, but yes, we do get it out there. And the students help quite a bit.
Yes. They push it.
Any other questions before we move on to capital outlay? Okay, capital outlay.
Okay, capital outlay. We have a total submitted request of four million three hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, broken down into three different categories. Building repairs and renovations in the amount of one million three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and six dollars. Vehicles and equipment in the amount of two hundred thousand five hundred dollars and bonded projects in the amount of two million seven sixty-six four seventy-six. Go through a few of them. I'm not going to go through the entire list because that's not typically how much we get funded. So I'm just going to run down the first ten projects in the building repairs and renovations. The first is exterior painting and cupola repairs at Hedge Elementary School in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. This request is for additional funding for a project that's already been funded at, at, I believe it was ninety thousand dollars, thereabouts, for gutter replacements. As we get into doing that project, we found that the gutters are integral to the roof, which means you need a roofing contractor to go through and take out the gutters. We found more trim that needed replacing than we thought originally. And the cupolo is in very poor condition and that is going to require some serious staging. So our plan is to go through and take this eighty-five thousand along with the ninety thousand and do one project at one time. The second project is to replace windows, one pod per year at West Elementary. This started this past summer. We did get pod one done. Did a great job, came out well. It moved right along, got it done. It's, it's sealed and this is to move on to the next pod. The third is to pave the parking lot, crack fill and seal coat the play area at Hedge Elementary School and the driveway. The playground and the parking areas are in desperate need of asphalt. The fourth project is to replace or create additional parking at West Elementary. This one has been here a couple of years. The West Elementary School staff pretty much take up the entire parking area of the school.
Yeah.
And when you have any kind of an event over at West Elementary, they're parking down the driveway, out on Route eighty, turns into a one-way lane going in and out. This would add thirty-five or so parking spaces there and would be a great enhancement to the school. The fifth is to replace carpet, carpeting with tile at the IMC here at PCIS in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred. That's, that's a project that's been going on forever. I mean, we've replaced a lot of carpet in this school, but unfortunately we still have more. Sidewalk and asphalt repairs over at South Middle School in the amount of sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. The sidewalk that goes around the bus loop at South Middle School is pulling away from the granite curbing. And that whole entire sidewalk needs to be restructured and rebuilt. The third, I'm sorry, the seventh is to replace the public address system at PCIS in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. This was a project that was requested last year and is carried over again this year. The eighth is to replace windows at Federal Furnace School, one pod a year. And that would be the beginning of that project, which would be the same as the one at West. The ninth project is to replace the gymnasium flooring over at Hedge Elementary. It's approximately twenty-one hundred and forty square feet of wood flooring and would be taken up and replaced with two and a quarter inch maple flooring. And the tenth is to do field renovations and install a chain link fence here at PCIS at the fields in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and two dollars. These fields really do need some work. I mean, they're sandy, gravelly. They're getting to the point where it's, it's really difficult to do any kind of sports on these fields. The vehicles and equipment, we are looking at replacing Truck nine forty-five, which is a utility body truck. All of these vehicles have high mileage. All three of the trucks are used for plowing and sanding operations. And the fourth vehicle is the two thousand and eight Explorer that's used by my assistant. They're all due in the cycle to be replaced. The bonded projects are the same two that were there last year for the roofs at West and Indian Brook for replacement. And I get asked this every year, so I will say that I believe that we probably have, these are on there really for informational purposes so that it doesn't come as a big shock to the community when somebody says, "We need a roof replaced." I would think probably two years before those really need to be done. Be able to answer any questions?
Okay, questions about the capital outlay list? I certainly, I'm not going to question your priority, but I would, do want to ask you, I do want to ask you a question. Because of what happened at the library with the leaking skylights and that, the damage was very extensive and we know that. Now, we have leaking, we have to replace skylights at, at Cold Spring. It's number thirteen. Any concern that we could find what we found at the library?
I don't believe so.
All right.
The, the skylights at Cold Spring are wood. They're an older system and we maintain those. I mean, anytime we've had a leak in those skylights at Cold Spring, we've been able to.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Any other questions on the capital out list, priority list? Is this, this is for, is this an action item? To approve this list as presented?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we, that we approve the capital improvement, capital outlay expenditure recommendations?
Great. There's a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Hunt is the second. Any questions on the motion? Okay, so let's vote on this capital outlay list, please.
Who was the second?
I'm sorry, the second was Ms. Hunt.
I am sorry, I was, my attention was elsewhere.
It's not up on Lee's.
You have to join meeting again.
Everybody else is voting.
Did you join the meeting?
Hit the join meeting a second time.
Did you join the meeting? Try it again.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Montron.
Thank you. And before I leave, I just want to add my two cents worth to the students of both North and South High School for their work over at the new administration building. It's really been a pleasure to see. It's really been a pleasure to see how dedicated they are in going in and doing this work. I haven't heard one complaint out of any student there that they're doing something that they don't want to do or anything else. They've gone in, they've had great attitudes, they've done fantastic work. And they really should be commended. And especially mine, we've talked a lot about the inside.
Of the outside, too.
Those poor kids over at North High, they're part of the facilities management group. When they went in and took out all that overgrown stuff in front of the building, that was the coldest day of the year. I never saw so many hands ripping things out in my life. I mean, they were, they were unbelievable.
Teenagers don't know how to dress for the weather, so I'm sure.
They worked up a sweat in that cold weather, so.
Okay, thank you so much. The committee's gonna take a 10-minute break, we'll be back at 8:40. Thank you very much. We are back in session. Next item is the solar project. Mr. Costin.
Thank you, good evening. This is, as you know, we've had, this has happened a number of times. Our fields will be sold and sold again, much like a mortgage is resold. This is our, this is our second largest field. The Stopple Certificate is a standard procedure. It's just certifying that we agree to all the terms and conditions that are in our original agreement and that there's no other, no other factors. So, the new buyer will be Clean Capital Holding Company. This is for our second largest field, which is in Free Town, and recommend that we sign this.
You've heard the recommendation?
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation regarding the purchase agreement. Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions on this one? Okay, we'll take the vote, please. Okay, everybody voted in favor. Thank you, Mr. Costin. Okay, we have five resolutions. The remaining five resolutions from the annual meeting of the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, this is the last section of the resolutions. This is Resolution 5 regarding reporting and accountability standards. The background on this particular resolution is private schools and some charter opportunities do not have to follow through with some of the regulations that we have in Massachusetts. For example, with Title 1, I'll use Title 1 as an example, as I mentioned in my recommendation. Title 1 is a federal grant. We have to, we apply for those funds. We are, in Massachusetts, required to offer some of those funds to private schools. So, the private schools have the opportunity to take those funds and use them. Sometimes they decline them, sometimes they don't. But they do not have to follow through with some of the other state and federal mandates that we have to follow. So, what this resolution is trying to do is trying to level the playing field on those expectations from school districts, whether they're private or not. So, I recommend supporting this resolution because we have a number of requirements that we have to follow through with that have operational circumstances. And other entities, other school, private schools, or in some cases charter schools do not have those requirements imposed on them.
So, any members? Questions, comments, or motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we support the Resolution Number 5.
I have a motion to support Resolution Number 5. It's seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any questions on the motion? Take the vote, please. Okay, everybody voted yes? Resolution Number 6, please.
Yes, it seems that this year we have a number of resolutions and they have some very effective language. And this is one of those areas that we have tonight. This is relative to health of all students. And this is connected to the existing debate over the appropriate content of sexual and reproductive health education. Recent federal initiatives may lead to limiting funding for programs to prevent teen pregnancy and adverse health outcomes to those which teach abstinence only or rhythm-method-based curricula. So, my feeling with this particular piece is I think that our health education needs to be inclusive and needs to be comprehensive. So, with those, that recommendation and that, and that opportunity, I recommend that the committee support this resolution. Keep in mind that, again, this is my opinion and that is just for reference to this committee.
Questions, Ms. Hunt?
I think I let everybody know I attended the MAS-C's Division 3 meeting that went over all of these. And even though I was in the committee that created them, I went to take some more notes just to give them to you and also to hear what other school districts had to say. There were some questions about the part that said age-appropriate under the whereas. And I think that it was determined that, you know, it would be really up to the schools to determine age-appropriate. So, that just might be something that comes up for discussion. But the other thing is, just so that everybody knows, that explanation, the first paragraph, that's a direct quote from Secretary DeVos. So, and then they said that basically it means, what it's gonna mean for the schools is the ability to look at all programs that look beyond abstinence only. Doesn't mean you have to do it, it just says that we are allowed to look at other programs other than what the secretary is recommending.
Motion? Ms. Hunt?
I'll move to accept this resolution.
The motion is to support Resolution Number 6. Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions on that? Okay, please vote.
Did yours, did yours come up?
It did.
We've gotten on one more.
Yeah. It's just not.
Even on the joint meeting?
No. What I have to do.
Yours won't come up?
Weird. I'm tight.
It wants to go to a voice vote?
I think we have to, because mine's not, mine's not coming up.
Okay.
I just joined meeting and synced it and it's not.
And what, everybody else has voted in the affirmative, what was gonna be your vote? Okay, that's unanimous, everybody voted in the affirmative, although it was technologically blocked. Resolution Number 7, please.
Yes, Resolution Number 7 on gender identity, inclusive athletic participation policy. The public school leaders need to provide educational access and maintain safe environments for all, including LGBTQ students. And all students must be protected from discrimination, harassment and bullying. And LGBTQ students experience adverse incidents at alarming rates compared to their counterparts. And it is a job of the schools to provide safe and supportive environments for optimal well-being. And there are instances in athletics where LGBTQ students do not have protection nor their opportunity for privacy. The resolution addresses various forms of discrimination based on gender identity and seek to protect students from such biases in various public school venues and at school-sponsored activities. In particular, it addresses such items as uniform accommodations for athletes regardless of gender identity and areas other than where federal protections are vague. Opponents may argue that federal protections should be adequate and that these, this represents more intrusive regulations on the area of sexual identity. And my recommendation is the school, Plymouth Public Schools have worked on providing environments that are free from discrimination, harassment and bullying. We strive to create a culture that allows all students to feel comfortable in our schools. This is in the classrooms or on the field. We work tirelessly to try to understand regulation, but also we work tirelessly to understand the current day issues that our children are grappling with and try to create environments that support the stage that they are in life. I feel that the administration of the district is fully in support of this resolution and I am in full support of this resolution as recommended. I recommend approval.
Thank you for your recommendation. Ms. Hunt?
Okay, so there's already a proposed amendment to this. And if you want, I'll read it to you really quickly. It's Springfield. Therefore, be it resolved that MAS-C help file legislation which would have the effect of protecting LGBTQ students from discrimination, harassment and bullying by requiring all school students develop and approve policies designated to treat students based on their gender identity, by protecting their privacy, providing access gender-neutral restrooms, locker rooms and private showers, instituting reasonable accommodations, using their preferred pronouns, embedding sensitivity training in professional development and providing necessary accommodations. So, this resolution, they're expecting to have the most discussion on. But, so, the reasonable accommodations part is because they understand that not everybody's gonna have the money in their budget to build new showers. So, that's why it says reasonable accommodations. You know, where most gyms, like older schools have, still have those gang showers. You know, and kids that don't have a gender identity problem don't like using those showers.
Nobody does.
So, basically, it came out of the, this, this resolution came under the Metro West. It's equivalent to our Safe Schools survey. There's a Metro West one that's, I guess, pretty involved. And basically, they just realized that the amount of kids that said that they had thought about suicide was alarming. And the Framingham School Committee said, "We just can't, we have to do everything that we", they said, "We need to do everything we can to take a stand and not tolerate bullying and making our children feel like they, there is no other choice for them other than to commit suicide." Basically, this involves making safer spaces for students. Cultural, they also said to have cultural, like with coaches, like there have been instances where coaches have, you know, kind of been like, "You run like a girl" and da-da-da. And a lot of this bullying does happen in sports. And there is a little bit about the uniforms as well. And basically, it means if a transgender student wants to be a cheerleader, then even though it's a girl, maybe they don't necessarily have to be forced to wear a skirt. They can modify their uniforms. They're not saying that they expect everybody to go out and break the budget on any of this, but they have to make reasonable accommodations. So, that's pretty much all that the Framingham, but this amendment has been put in there now. Just so that you know, it's not, you have to change your locker rooms and everything right away.
Actually, I'm really glad about the reasonable accommodations because my notes was exactly that. The locker rooms and the private showers.
Yeah, and this is an amendment that's being brought forth, that'll be brought forth on the floor on Friday by Springfield.
Okay. So, are we voting on what's in our electronic school board or?
The resolution with the amendment.
The resolution that you read it.
We could vote for the amendment, because I'm gonna have to be asked to vote on the amendment anyway.
Yeah, she's gonna, you're gonna have to vote for the amendment.
Ms. Badger?
I'm just wondering, Ms. Hunt, if there was any discussion on whether LGBTQ, if they should add the I to expand it? If they're, you know, like it's LGBTQIA?
I mean, right now, they're just, they're just calling it LGBTQ. Because there's more than just the I now, so it could be.
I just didn't know if that had come up in the discussion. I mean, I think it covers everybody, but.
Yeah.
Curiosity.
We could take this in two motions, since Ms. Hunt is our representative. And she told us about the amendment and she's gonna have to vote on the amendment. We could vote on the amendment and then vote on the resolution.
I think that's appropriate. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Because it'll be, it'll, excuse me, but it'll be presented initially as a resolution.
Also talks about the sensitivity training, and I don't think that was in there originally either.
It's not, I did not see that.
Oh, wait, no, it is. I'm sorry, it is in there. Embedding sensitivity training in professional development and providing uniform accommodations. And they changed that to say necessary accommodations. That comment that says provide, that last sentence, uniform accommodations is gonna say necessary.
So, if you want to give us a motion on the amendment?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the Resolution 7 as, if amended. Or approve the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, what will the amendment say?
The amendment, I just read it, do you want me to read it again?
Yeah, yeah.
It will say, "Therefore, be it resolved that MAS-C help file legislation which would have the effect of protecting LGBTQ students from discrimination, harassment and bullying by requiring all student, school districts to develop and approve policies designed to treat students based on their gender identity, by protecting their privacy, providing access to gender-neutral restrooms, instituting reasonable accommodations to provide locker rooms and private showers, using their preferred pronouns, embedding sensitivity training in professional development and providing necessary accommodations."
Is there a second to that motion?
I put it up for electronic school board vote. Give me one second, so it was seconded by Mr. Selly.
They don't have a second yet, though.
Well, I'll second him. Well, she's seconded. Actually, Lee did. Yeah, Lee.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we can now vote then on the amendment?
This works now.
Start with the program.
Everybody voted in favor. I'm going to express my opinion on Resolution 6 as it's written in the book. I was not going to vote on it.
On 7?
Because, Resolution 7, yes. I was not going to vote yes because it didn't say reasonable accommodations. So, I supported the amendment, but not the resolution without reasonable accommodations. Ms. Badger?
Do we have to vote on the original so that you can move on to the amendment? Or is the one with the amendment going to be presented?
You said that was already approved, the amendment was approved.
Well, it wasn't approved by the body, it was, it's going to be, yeah, it's going to be brought forth on the floor.
So, now we'll vote on the amended resolution?
No, 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 no. We're gonna vote on Resolution 7 as presented to us originally. Without the language of reasonable accommodations. So, is there a motion on 7?
Well, I'd like to move not to support.
You can vote it down, then you can vote. Margie's putting, Ms. Burgess is putting 7 on the floor for a vote. Her motion is to approve Resolution Number 7. Is there a second? You can always vote it down.
Ms. Badger?
Yes, Ms. Badger, is that the second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve 7. This is now without the amendment.
I'd say as amended, but.
We don't know what's gonna happen.
It may come up on the floor, it's two separate moves.
There might be another amendment that we don't know about yet, too.
Okay, so you have that.
Amendments can come from the floor.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. It's time to vote on it?
Interesting.
Yes, these kind of things do get confusing. I don't want to vote against the LGBTQ.
Okay, Resolution Number 7 had two voting in favor, four opposed, one abstention. That motion did not pass.
Can I ask you a question?
Ms. Hunt?
All right, so if the amendment doesn't vote, then does, does not get approved. And then we vote on the original motion, we're saying that we don't support this.
That's correct.
I have a problem with that. I might have to abstain then. I don't want to not vote, I don't think it's right for us to not support this at all.
Well, you've brought up why.
Right, yeah, but after the First Amendment, I can use my discretion.
You brought up the why with the amendment. They already know why.
We don't know what other amendments are coming through.
I, I think that, you know that this committee is in favor of Number 7 with the amendment. So, that's what you'll tell them.
That's, that's it.
And just for past practice and history, by the, by the committee supporting that amendment change, if it's made, you have the ability to vote the will of the committee.
You can offer the amendment if they don't offer it.
Yes.
Oh, no, I, yeah, you're right. Absolutely, and I can support this amendment, too.
Okay. Resolution Number 8, sports wagering.
Yeah, I never thought we'd see a sports wagering resolution on this docket. But the general court. the General Court, in its effort to fund public education to full extent of the law, including partial funded and unfunded mandates imposed upon school districts, it's limited in the ability to do so by the limits to revenue generated from current taxes, and advocates for public education have articulated several important strategies to improve public schools. The premise for this is that there are a number of opportunities that we have in place today that we generate tax dollars to help support funding education. What we're trying... What this resolution is trying to do is include sports wagering tax benefits that the Massachusetts will receive, and those tax benefits in form of revenue can come into the form of potential funding for school districts. So this is a revenue source. Opponents to this resolution would say that we don't want sports betting to be interfering with public education funding because of the sinfulness, in some people's view, of that opportunity. Problem is, is there are other things that we are already taking tax dollars from that may fall into the same category.
Yeah.
So why would we do, you know, gain tax benefits from other opportunities but not for this?
Yeah.
So my recommendation is to support the resolution because of the potential funding opportunities that is in line with things that we are already doing.
Okay, Ms. Hunt.
So, again, a lot of discussion on this one. Basically, what this says is that we are not advocating for sports wagering.
Right.
We're not advocating for it. It was not written for that. They actually probably would rather not have it, but if we are going to have it, then we need to get some of the money.
True. That's pretty clear.
That's what it means.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 8? Mr. Morgan makes a motion to approve Resolution Number 8. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Ms. Badger is the second. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, let us vote on it. Everybody else voted in favor. And now Resolution Number 9.
This is the last one for this year. This is relative to access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. The Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, is a law that makes available free, appropriate public education to eligible children and disabilities through the national... To the nation ensures special education and relative services to those children. In the law, Congress states that disability is a natural part of the human experience and no way diminishes the right individuals to participate or contribute in society, to society. Improving education results in children with disabilities and the special element of the national policy, ensuring equality of opportunity, full participation, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for individuals with disabilities. The idea of IDEA is laid out very clearly, that students have the opportunity to thrive based on their disability, and that is what school districts can do. They can put opportunities, plans together, that actually help all of the people involved with the child to get their education they need and address a disability that they do have. What this provision allows, this resolution would allow, is for the parents of those children to have five days to actually review the IEP, to actually have better opportunity to sit down in a team meeting. That's five days prior to a team meeting, and that's what the resolution is geared towards. So I'll read the explanation aloud. Families of students served by special education programs, and particularly those who are English language learners frequently benefit from having information about their children provided in time to allow them to advocate for their children. This information may be brief or complex and require not only time to digest, but to also translate and explain. This resolution would seek legislation to require that information be provided to parents at least five days prior to IEP meetings and to be provided in families' preferred language. So this, not only does this give some time for the understanding, but possible translation for resources to be available for families. I am in support of the resolution. I believe that a five-day window does allow for families to review the documentation and prepare information prior to a meeting where they're required to sign an IEP or not.
Right. Okay, Ms. Hunt.
So it's not filed yet, but I believe there's going to be an amendment in here to say at least five school days. They're going to add the word "school" and "business."
School.
That's a good one.
And that you believe is going to be made?
I believe it's going to be made, but it's not in there yet. It's not there.
But we can... We can take a motion on Resolution 9 as presented. Because five days is better than no days.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Ms. Badger.
I move that we support Resolution 9 as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess is the second. Any questions? Okay. Please vote.
Here you go again.
Okay, so everybody voted in favor.
Nancy, you have that? Thank you.
That's it, right? Yeah.
Okay, we have four field trips that I'm prepared to have presented, and we can do it in one vote. That's okay with the committee? Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, we have a number of field trips that are on the agenda tonight for the school committee, and these are relative to the DECA program and vocational program opportunities at both Plymouth North and South. These field trips are annual field trips that we take. They're very traditional in Plymouth. The reason why they are on the agenda tonight is they are to be approved every three years, and we're at that three-year benchmark where they need to be approved, and you will see, if they are approved tonight, you will see them come back on the agenda in three years from tonight.
Oh, I see.
And Mrs. Sylvia, Director of the Vocational Program, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have specific to each one of these items.
Yeah, but there's both DECA and Skills USA.
Skills USA and DECA, yes.
Does the committee feel it needs an explanation?
No.
Can I say something? I've been here a long time.
Yes, do you want to talk? Do you want to talk?
The only point I want to make is both Skills USA and the DECA are less... are more co-curricular activities than they are field trips, and they get just lumped in there because they don't have their own category, but they are co-curricular for both programs.
Ms. Burgess put a motion on the table to approve field trips from 9.82 and including 9.11. Seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question on the motion? Okay, we'll try the vote again. So please vote.
Yeah, that's how you're good. It's weird. Sometimes it's quirky. It's really weird.
All right, everybody vote in favor. Thank you. Thank you for waiting. Sorry.
You're waiting for such a short thing.
Come back and visit again.
Okay, we have some job descriptions this evening.
Yes, our first job description in order is the Ed TV Station Manager. And I mean, meeting with our Ed TV staff, it has grown a lot over the years, we feel some of the pieces in the actual management of the station with all the programs and tasks that are coming out, that there's a real need for this role. Right now, Mr. Riley is the Educational TV Director, and he's been kind of in that role, but we're looking to kind of expand it a little bit into a station manager. This wouldn't be any increased cost to the district at all, more just a reformatting of positions is what we're looking at.
Committee members, Ms. Badger.
I just have a question about Bullet 7 under performance responsibilities, and maybe I'm just reading it weirdly, but should it be to bullets work safely without presenting a direct threat to self or others, develop, maintain all programming functions such as program logs? Can you hurt yourself? I was like, can you hurt yourself doing those things?
It probably should be two.
Or others?
It probably should be two. I can do that. Absolutely. And we worked in collaboration with the Ed TV staff to put this together.
Anything else? So we'll take a motion for this one?
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it with the correction?
Yes, with the correction.
Seconded by Ms. Badger? On a question? Okay, let's try to vote it. Lee, tell us if we're doing it.
I will.
Yeah, yeah. Got it started. It's kind of weird.
Yeah, we're going to move, because this system's working.
Hey, everybody voted in favor. Wow, that was a quick one. Okay, head coach.
Yes, Mr. Pinto's still here. I know because of job descriptions, we meet every Tuesday. The coaching positions are part of the EAPC contract, so we thought these needed to be updated as well. We're in the final stages of all job descriptions for the EAPC. We're getting there, right, Tom? Yep. He's going to miss our meetings, I know. But on the coaching, they're similar in that the two positions, obviously the assistant reports to the head coach, but a couple notes in particular that we have added in real updates, they were very, very outdated. Number four is a very new addition, communicating with building guidance and counseling staff as needed in regards to student support. We're seeing a lot of those needs, and the coaches are doing that. We also added, especially with our facilities, number six oversees the safety conditions of the facility or area in which the assigned sport is conducted, really because of the high level, obviously, of facilities to make sure we are keeping an eye on those. Number nine is something that our athletic directors train our coaches in, knowledgeable of school safety and emergency action plans for after-school hours and on outside fields. We have a very, you know, active process with our trainers and AEDs, and so that's also very new in the language updating. And number 11 is a new one about reviewing student-athlete scholastic grades and other performance criteria for eligibility so that the kids are, you know, it's a motivating factor throughout the season. So the others are things that we've updated with the times because they're pretty outdated. That's on the head coaching position. A lot of the other pieces... There's a lot. The coaches do so much, pre and postseason meetings, leagues, things like that.
Okay, on the head coach.
In the... I'm sorry, the only other addition is we added the concussion awareness certification that they have to have now as well to one of the actual qualifications, so.
I have a couple suggestions, but I want to ask you a question first.
Sure.
On number three under qualifications?
Yes.
I wanted to question whether or not we ought to add a sentence to that, and I'll read you the sentence that I thought was appropriate, but I want you to tell me if you think it's inappropriate, because perhaps it is. I wrote, in addition to what you wrote there, "Recent completion of a coach-education course, i.e. MIAA, NFHS, comma, et cetera, preferred but not required."
That might be a great idea. All new coaches who are not teachers have to do that, I know, from being a high school principal, but I think if we added "preferred but not required," it'd be appropriate, because those are the classes they go to.
And the reason why I'm suggesting it is it's extensive knowledge, but so many of these sports, the skill level has changed so dramatically in a decade. You could have coached two decades ago, and the kind of kid you're going to coach now is far advanced.
Very different. Very different. Yep, okay, absolutely. If I can get it at the end, right as you were speaking, but I'll grab it at the end from you. Yep.
Let me go on to some other questions or comments. I had a complaint from a couple of parents who went to pick up their student-athletes at the end of a training session, and the coach, for whatever reason, decided to run the training session 20 minutes longer.
Okay.
So all these parents are sitting in the parking lot waiting for this to end when they were given a time that it was supposed to end.
Yep, yep.
Now, there might have been a really good reason for that, and I'm not questioning the coach's decision, but I was thinking in number 17, adding a sentence at the end of number 17 where it says maintains and publishes and strives to follow schedules of training sessions, games, and other team events.
Yep. I think it's a great suggestion. I really do, because I think they try to, but I've gotten those calls before myself, and it does happen, and sometimes the coach needs to be spoken to, so. Yep, absolutely. Especially in Plymouth with the distance, parents drive.
Yeah.
Okay. And finally, my usual one, particularly in a case like this, would be number 22, maintains the confidentiality of student-athlete information when necessary.
Yep.
Here again, I don't want coaches learning about a family problem and talking to other coaches about it.
Right. I'll take the line from... I didn't add it from the teacher ones, but I can modify that as well. Yep. I don't know if there's any more on that. The assistant coach is very similar, but more, you know, and I would add, I can add those pieces in.
Right.
But it's more assists the head coach, assists the... You know, they're not the first line of communication the head coach is in a program, so those are the language of, you know, oversees in conjunction with the head coach. So those are the only main changes with theirs as well, so.
Okay, so we can take motions here, Ms. Badger or a motion.
I move that we approve the head athletic coach job description with edits or with changes. Changes, thank you.
Changes. Ms. Burgess is the second. Any questions? Okay, we'll vote, then.
It came up.
Everybody voted in favor, and now can I have a motion for the assistant athletic coaches?
Now, the same thing's going to be added to them?
Yes, I would modify those. Yep.
All right, I'll move that.
Ms. Burgess has moved assistant coaches, seconded by Ms. Hunt. On a question? Okay, we'll vote that.
Well.
Get joined.
No, I...
Never mind.
I was hitting the middle of the mouse pad instead of the corner of the mouse pad.
Okay, everybody vote. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Maestis, it's time to discuss your superintendent's annual plan and SMART goals.
Tonight, I am presenting my SMART goals. They have... They were on the agenda the last time, but we moved them to this meeting because we were running long into the evening. So keep in mind that these are my goals that are presented to you, but there are a variety of other categories that I'm evaluated on. The evaluation document is in this as well, so these are goals that I am focusing on, but of course, there are many other areas that I work on throughout the year. These are some of the items that I am focusing on this year. The first goal is relative to improvement planning process to be introduced. This model will be based on the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, on school improvement planning. This is one of those process steps that we take every year, and we have actually gone through this and continue to go through these opportunities every year. We've been visited by the Department of Education earlier this year, and we are awaiting the report from the Department of Education, but this is specific to taking a look at how we, as a school district, become more and more proficient in looking at our benchmarks in schools. One of the areas that we discussed last year was how do we focus in on the opportunity for schools to be a lot more engaged with student performance. I think tonight, you saw an example with Principal Wilson on us focusing in on student performance and looking at those benchmarks, and one of the recommendations that this body provided to me last year is that you want to see more and more of that as we start looking at school improvement plans. So as we move forward, one of the things that we are working on, and Dr. Campbell did present some of this in his presentation a couple of meetings back, is that we are going is that we are going to revise that whole process of how we look at school improvement plans, and we are going to have a new process when a plan is up. Tonight, you saw a report on Hedge Elementary, but they're mid-cycle. Every school district that has the beginning of a new plan, they will engage in a new reporting process, and you will see a consistent format that will come through. And this is relative to the work that we believe is important for our schools to have very relevant and pointed goals that are relative to school improvement around assessment and curriculum, but also on school culture and climate, not focusing so much on, you know, beautification projects and things of that nature, but it's really on how we can look at our schools and the performance of how they're really moving through the years of their programs. So this is something that is really prompted on the need for us as a district to really focus in on student performance, student academic growth in math, the LA, science, social studies. Ultimately, we will have social studies as one of those areas that we have some data to really review at a higher level, but for now, we believe that the direction that we can give our schools and our school improvement planning, opportunities to have a very concise, but consistent reporting means back to you and present to this, to this body. So with that, Dr. Sorensen, this is my first school.
Committee members with observations, questions, comments, we got in goal number one. Ms. Badger.
I guess my main question is, so if we are seeing some people in their mid-cycle, like we, you just had Hedge School today, then we don't see them next year until when they do their, their new plan, correct?
Yes.
So my question is, they achieve by the May 2019? Is that actually doable?
We will have the documents in place, and every one will be on a new cycle and in process.
Okay.
So the following school year, we'll have some schools this year that will actually report with the new
Yes.
methods that we've developed, that Dr. Campbell has actually shared with our principals, had shared with you.
Okay.
But we expect by May 2019, you will see the majority of our schools that are in that new cycle presented to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, moving on to SMART goal number two.
SMART goal number two is relative to the theme that I selected for this year. I do believe that people around the school district, staff and students included, realize that the theme is relative to how we celebrate and encourage acceptance of diversity. And I think that's one of the things that we, as a school district, are really honed into. I think when you start taking a look at some of the things that we are witnessing across our country about respect, appreciation for differences, and then how we carry ourselves when we interact with our students, or interact with colleagues, that we have a high level of respect for differences in people. And I believe that the theme this year and the message that was sent to our kids has resonated with a lot of people, but it's, I don't think it's enough to say that a song or an opening day presentation is enough. I think we have to follow that up with opportunities that we see within our school system. I think you have noticed and will continue to notice throughout the school year that we have students and faculty engaging with opportunities for children and students, elementary school-aged children, and our high school, you know, almost senior, graduating seniors, to engage in opportunities to really think about how this theme and how this premise of creating an environment in our school district that is relative to our overall well-being as a community, because I believe that there are a lot of examples of how school culture and school climate, even district culture and district climate can be detrimental to students. And I think it's important that our school communities across the town of Plymouth engage and identify that there is a level of understanding that we, as a school system, and we as a community, need to encourage our children, our students, to really appreciate one another for their thought in difference, whether it be political, whether it be gender, whether it be a topic that comes up that is a strong, strong belief.
Religious.
But religious, but they all have an opportunity to understand and accept differences. And I think that's the breakdown that we have in our society. But if we, as individuals in our school system, cannot teach and give clear examples of what it means to have respect and honor difference, we're missing the mark, and I think that, you know, the whole slogan of "this is me" is very appropriate in my eyes, because, and I'll give you a preview to my graduation speech. I've been thinking about this a lot, but if I can come, if somebody like me can come from the middle of nowhere in New Mexico, not having a great upbringing as far as my early education, and come to Massachusetts, and this state and this community, primarily Plymouth, has embraced me to come and lead a school system? I mean, I think the community of Plymouth does have that underpinning and background to appreciate diversity and background, but I think we have to show our children in Plymouth that you can do it too. We have to do that, and I think it's important, and that's why I wanted this, this theme to be as, to resonate as it has, I'm glad it has, but I think we, I think I'd be missing the mark if we didn't, if we didn't push on that a little bit more. So with that, Dr. Sorensen, I think I've said enough.
Number two, let's discuss number two.
Cultural, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's all inclusive, March.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
Ms. Badger.
I think this is a really great goal. I kind of wish, and it's really hard, but that there be some sort of quantitative measure. I mean, I was thinking, and we're a little late into this, but if there were some sort of survey that we could do from those students on how they perceive diversity, like we've been talking about with "No Place for Hate" a lot, on like, what is diversity, and how do you conceptualize it? And how do you portray that onto the world? And we've been doing some real dig, debate stuff, thanks to, you know. My gosh.
To piggyback on her, so yeah, we've just been talking about what diversity, equity, and inclusion like truly means, and our biases, what we, because everyone has them, and so, and how that affects our decisions or how we meet others, and so, and in that, we've actually been doing intakes and surveying each other. Because in order for us to, in this particular, in that particular committee, in order for us to serve a particular population that may be marginalized, we have to understand where they're coming from.
Absolutely.
And so, that's.
And I have to, I have to follow you two on this, you know, obviously, we're all, this is a very important topic.
Yes, it is.
You know, Dr. Lemus, as you said a second ago, "Understand and accept differences", and I think that's true, but I also believe now, for the last week or so, for the last week or two, if you're in third grade, you're gonna conclude that people who come as immigrants, we should be afraid of them, because we're hearing, these kids are hearing that if you're not like us, you could belong to a gang, or you could be a terrible person. So in addition to understanding, accepting, we shouldn't fear. There's just too much fear, and I want to follow your last point, Vedna. I know it from my experience that, you didn't use the word prejudice, but I'll use it. Prejudicial comments and beliefs sneak into a lot of what happens during the day. It happens in our school system, you know, somebody could say, "Oh, he's Spanish. Oh, he's black. Oh, he's Brazilian."
Yeah.
You know, "He lives here." Those comments have no place in our school system, none whatsoever. And if this goal can help address these subtle prejudicial characteristics, it's the best goal, it's the best goal on the planet. I hope we can do it.
Well, to that point, you know, last year, Patty and Chris and Gary, we all, we met with focus groups to really talk about our schools. And I think, you know, we won't get the quantity of data that we're really looking for, an inclusive set of data, but I think those opportunities are a really good gauge for what the beliefs are of our students, and I think it would be wise for us to continue to have those conversations with students, because what comes of those, that dialogue, what came of that dialogue is an awareness that we got, that we didn't necessarily have before we had the opportunity with our kids. It's great to have that opportunity for our kids, because I think they feel that there's an outlet for understanding, but to the point that you have all made, it would be wonderful if we could've measured this the last four or five years, because I think what we are, what we see today is a different, I think we would, we would have a much different response based on the flood of information that is out on social media, what's on television, and the messages that we are hearing and how that can shape some belief. You know, I have heard from, especially when there's a tragedy that happens in our country, where we have a flood of calls, and I've had grandparents call me, and they spend a lot of time in front of the television, and the opinions start to shape based on that flood of information, and one of the things that we need to do in our, in our school system, in our classrooms, is share that there's balance to what you hear. There's, there are always two sides to a situation, but sometimes we never hear the other side. And that's what we want, is a educated understanding of what some of these issues are.
Yep.
Your list of the goal of "I will do this by", those A, B, C, D are good, because that's where it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen in the classroom at that level.
Yeah. And the examples that I, that I get from our teachers of what they're doing to highlight who, what's happening, is pretty powerful, and I'm looking forward to sharing some of the results of what's happening in classrooms with you all, because I think teachers have really embraced what's, what's happening here with this.
There's a lot of things. I know with foreign students, when I was placing them and things, I mean, kids will, you know, they come from a country, they don't know a lot of our slangs and all kinds of weird things, and they get, the kids want friends, you know, so they're, they go, "Oh, well, you go ask the teacher about something, and it'll be a really terrible word, or a thought, or whatever it is", and they will go and ask the teacher, see? And then they all laugh, and they have a great time about it, but it is really discriminatory. It's terrible. But it does happen, and I'm sure it happens to the kids that move in. It isn't just the exchange students.
No, it's just, I had an observation this weekend, even like the sports teams are kind of picking up on this, because my daughter's in the cheerleading team, and they have a musical routine, and the coach is not a teacher in the district, so I let her know to go Google it, because I was at a competition, and our girls came in second, but another team had that in their music montage, so I was like, "No". So I think that they're gonna try maybe for basketball season or something to pick that up, but I think it's kind of cool how it's kind of crossing, it's on the forefront of everybody's mind. I think most of our kids now, when they hear the song, they stop and think about, they don't think about the movie. They stop and think about you, or the school, or what they're learning, so. I think it's a pretty cool, not visual, but sensual, or that's the wrong word, too. You know, stimulate.
Sure.
Yeah, just.
Well, you know, I know this is just, well, one of the things.
Trigger, yeah. Let them think about what it really means.
About a month and a half ago, I received an email from a, from a school district in New York, and they have adopted the theme for their school for the year, so Nancy sent a couple of posters to the school.
Oh, nice.
Because they had, this is the theme, and they were going to really focus in on the whole concept, on the idea of individuality, and understanding what it meant to have an individual opinion, an individual look, individual opinion. So hopefully, we can continue to be aware of these type of things, not only this year, but as a cultural aspect of our school district.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say that, you know, you're always welcome to "No Place for Hate", we, on a second Thursday. And I know you've been before, but I think that'll, I mean, we can tell them, we can tell our members, and I think we have told them about the theme, but sometimes I think it comes, and they might pay attention a little differently than when someone else comes and shares the theme and that kind of discussion with them, but, and I know that Mrs. Haywood has some skills set that she might be able to help you with, that she's been helping us with on the committee, so.
We're just doing an introspective look at hers, yeah.
That's what takes ground swell.
All right. Goal number three.
The next is one that's near and dear to the school committee's heart. It's relative to health education. I know this is something that we have been tossing around for quite some time. We do, it's something that we have been focused on. One of the things that we need to do moving forward, and we hope to have this in place by May of this year, is redefine our focus for elementary education, present that plan to the school committee. Keep in mind that we will have some recommendations for moving forward that are potentially staff changes, but we feel confident that we can do that without impacting our school budget relative to our December presentation. So this December, when we do present our budget opportunities to you, we will not see additional staffing, but we will present to you later this year our model for how we are going to roll out with some changes for health education. So I think that is a great deal of work from a lot of people, principals at the elementary level, and a lot of staff members at the elementary level. So we believe that this year, you'll finally see what our elementary model will look like, and we look forward to working on it, so that's what we see for this goal.
All right. Comments, observations, questions about goal number three? I mean, yeah, goal number three. All right, let's go to the last one.
And the last one is relative to 11 Lincoln Street. It seems that every, we can't get out of facility work. We had north, we had south, we had, now we are at 11 Lincoln Street, and this is relative to moving in and preparing Pilgrim Harbor Academy into the lower level of 11 Lincoln Street. I think you're all aware that that program is up and running and thriving. That has moved forward a great deal of effort, organization and orchestrating to actually get that to take place. We have a lot, even though we did mention the significant amount of work that has been done by our vocational programming and our vocational kids, we have a lot of work to do. The goal is to have our human resources office and our business office operational by the end of December. They will be in on the first floor. We'll have the second floor, so we're focusing in all our efforts on getting that first floor complete. Once that floor is complete, then we'll move to the second floor. We're expecting by May, we'll have the second floor, which will be the coordinators, my office, Dr. Campbell's office. We will have the, pretty much the, we will have all district administrators that work in the Plymouth Public Schools in that, in that single building for the first time probably ever, which is a monumental task. And I will tell you, in June, we had no idea. So it's, it's something that we didn't really expect, but I think the school committee has embraced this opportunity. The town has embraced it.
It became the right thing at that point, yeah.
And here we are. So we expect by, by June, that you will, we're hoping to have a grand opening with the focus on children in June.
Oh, okay.
If we can do it earlier, we will.
Yeah, yeah.
My, or not even really a question, I just think that, just a suggestion is, and I know that we're getting donations, and we have labor donations, and, you know, just to keep track of that, and you probably already are, but I think it would be a really good tool for us to have in our back pocket.
Mr. Costin is tabulating our.
Okay, good.
In-con contributions and.
I figured he was.
But I just wanted to put it out there.
And to that, to that point, there is probably some work that we could do to overlay some of the evaluation documentation that we had on the building, and identify what was done prior to us moving in, the HVAC work, the roof work that was done through insurance, but also highlight the dollars that we have saved by having the vocational program involved in that process, and I will tell you, it's going to be a significant dollar, a significant dollar.
We knew the price of going into it.
We knew the price, right.
We knew the price. So I think we will have some very interesting information to share, and I really, you know, I'm looking forward to this grand opening to reveal that information, so the community can see, if there's a will, there's a way.
Yes, perfect.
Vedna had a chance to visit the building. Did you go during the day? Because I want to go in and see it, too.
I did go into, I did go during the day. The reason why I couldn't go to the first level, I think because they were in a session, but I kind of popped in.
And the door was unlocked?
Yes.
But I spoke to actually one of the instructors prior to saying that I was probably going to pop in either a Tuesday or Wednesday, and I can't on the Wednesday.
Instructors of the school downstairs, you mean?
No, of the vocational.
There's not always somebody there, but now there is.
Somebody's there all the time, not the, excuse me, the alternative program is operational all the time, but we have, there is either one. one of us, Ms. Dargie, Ms. Liskov. Arthur is on the third floor now. So somebody's in that building eight to five every day of the week.
But, but like...
You can't just walk in.
You can't just walk into the, no, but you just can't walk into the school part.
No.
If you came to see the first, second, or third floor.
If you, if you, if you want to go in and visit, please call me, and we will love to have you walk through.
Yeah, okay.
And you don't have to do it together. We can do it one at a time, or two at a time, but we would love to have you go in.
They were able to give me a tour, and I was, I became well aware of the plaster.
(laughing) Wasn't that, yeah.
It's my hand. Kind of touched it.
Okay, we've heard all the four, we've heard all the SMART goals, all four of them. I would like to take a motion to approve them. Ms. Hunt.
I move that the superintendent's SMART goals for the 2018-2019 school year be accepted and approved as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second on that one. Is there a question to the motion? Okay, we will vote on that motion.
(inaudible).
I should use my mouse, that would solve my problem. I'm going.
Going to roll.
I know, here we go.
Oh, there it is.
It's just a little slow.
It's sensing the mood.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody voted in favor of the SMART goals. That's great. Reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt.
I don't, I don't have a lot. I just, I attended the Mass Division meeting, which was really good. And actually, several of the school committees from other towns talked about your video. So that was brought up, because they said, "Oh, you have, you have the video. You're, you're..."
Take the video.
So it was, you're kind of a rock star. The other thing, too, is I was asked a week ago to be a panelist at one of the workshops at the Mass Convention Conference this week. So unfortunately, it's Saturday morning before lunch. Probably no one will go.
At least it's not after lunch.
But, so I'm going to go. I don't usually go on Saturday, but I'm going to go. It's about social media and school committees and school districts, and both you and Emily have been gracious enough to give me some information on that, from the school side. And just to let, yeah, I don't know, I don't even know when the Division III meeting is. I have to look it up in the schedule this week. But I've been nominated to be the vice chair of our division. So that means I have to go to the meetings.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, so I guess it has to be voted on, but it's, I don't know if anybody else has come forth for it. So I think the new, Charlene, who we all met when we did that tour, has decided not to run for reelection. So she's no longer a school committee member, and the president is going to be, he's from Silver Lake.
Okay. Great. I think he came to the thing, too.
Yeah, he was there, too. I think he lives in Pembroke.
Other, other reports and proposals. Ms. Badger.
All right, so I have, not a long one, but, so I wasn't able to be at the last meeting because I was on a work trip, so I have two Pilgrimage Collaborative kind of reviews for everybody. So at the meeting in September, or beginning of October, I don't even know what month they're in right now, they note, they let us know that there was a significant surplus through the Pilgrimage Collaborative. So instead, what is done as member districts of the collaborative, we get a certain percentage back when there's a surplus. And so this was the first time in, I think, three or four years that there was a surplus. It's probably not going to happen this year, but we're going to get $20,936 back if we haven't already. We approved it, so it's coming our way. And then we have a new director who started on November 1st, that's Dipna. We're really excited about her, having her on board, and, you know, and we're really grateful for all Maureen's hard work. She, we're sad to see her go. And then the other important thing I have here, I have a bound copy of the annual report, if anybody is interested in looking at it. It kind of highlights some of the staffing issues, or the staffing, the changes in staffing on, in parts of it. It shows kind of the, it shows the MCAS scores, so you can see the, you know, the alternate MCAS and some of the other, where the district members versus non-district members. And there's been some discussion that we'll be taking up next meeting, and probably for the rest of the year, as to whether or not what it means to be a member district, and is it more important that we get the surplus back? Or is it more important that we get a discount on our students that enrolled, like most collaboratives? We don't really, the only kind of benefit of being a member with the Pilgrimage Collaborative is that we get a percentage back when they see a, when they have a good year. And there's a surplus. And a lot of other collaboratives in the area, there's a percentage off on the tuition for each student. And so that is a big discussion that I think is going to probably take the rest of the year to, yeah. And so that it's whether or not it even is different. Does it make a difference has been a big part of the discussion. And then, let's see. And the, right now, this year, they're having, the enrollment levels are not where they were at this time last year, or what they predicted it being at. At this point, they have at least one student enrolled in all of the programs. And it's not that they're not doing, that they're doing poorly, it's just it's not on target to where they budgeted for it to be. So it might be a tight year at the collaborative. That's it.
Thank you for that report. Reports and proposals.
The only thing I'd...
I have a couple of things I have to ask the committee. You may have read the email that the on-the-road tour of PCIS for 11:13 has been moved to 8:30 a.m. And I want to know, you have to tell me now, but look at your schedules, we need to know if...
When is the...
11:13. It's currently going to be 8:30 a.m. in this building.
Next Tuesday.
I'm sorry?
Next Tuesday.
I think so. And then a couple of days after that, 11:19, we're at West School at nine o'clock in the morning. So again...
Okay, yeah, I'm down for him.
What?
I'll be there Tuesday.
Lee can make him. Yeah, I'll, I'll...
I'll be down.
I may have to leave quicker than, than, but I'll be there to begin, to begin it.
My question was the alternate date for PCIS from the 13th, is it still on the 15th?
I was told it was the 13th.
Right, but we had an alter, we had an alternate date in case.
For the 15th.
For the 15th.
My knowledge hasn't changed.
So it's, okay, perfect. So we're on for next Tuesday.
Stand up, stand up, stand up.
And the last thing I want to report is, I attended the, the boys' soccer game in Mansfield on Sunday, whatever night it was, Saturday night, Sunday night. I sound like, I sound like...
I don't know what month it is.
But I want to say, it was a good game, but I, I want to say that I was really, really pleased with the behavior of all of our fans. And you hear talk about things that have happened at other games this year, not our school, but there have been some pretty terrible reports out there. Our group was really well behaved at that game, so I thought it was excellent.
I wanted to say, the advisory dinner, the food was fantastic.
What?
I ate everything. The food likes everything that was there. The food was really, really good.
The kids did such a great job.
We were all there. A lot of us were.
Okay, I was going, okay. Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to echo what you said, that I was really impressed. I went to the field hockey game on Saturday, and, you know, it was a little difficult, but some of the students really showed a higher level of maturity than the adults, and I was really pleased to see that.
Ms. Hunt.
Sorry, that sparked, I know, we're trying to get out of here. But also, I, we had the cheerleading competition on Saturday, and what I wanted to say with that is, we had football players come. So not only did we have administration there, it was in women Hanson, but there were probably about six or seven football players that came to cheer on the cheerleaders.
That's good.
And that really, you know, was awesome. And most of them were seniors.
And that's exactly what we're after. That's, that's exactly what we're after. Ms. Burgess.
That's why I had to say it.
And I know, Fedna and I went to Plymouth South, hi, for the council meeting.
Yes.
So we were, we were both there. There was something else I was bringing up, and I can't remember. Isn't that...
Too much going on.
Fedna and I also had the Health Council.
Yes.
Yep, that was last week. That was very good. It was a big turnout, too, which was good.
I always liked being on that committee.
That's great. Hey, PYDC, is there a report this evening?
No, there is not.
Is there a building committee report this evening?
No, there is not. We did it. It's going to be this week.
We did.
On the eighth. Yeah.
Was it the billing committee?
Meeting on the eighth, but it's an hour later.
Okay. I didn't...
Personnel.
Yes. We have three coach and advisor appointments, 10 class invite appointments, and five resignations to report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Accounts payable.
Oh, I was looking at the, okay. Where a school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-110818 dated November 8th, 2018, and the amount of $1,850,512.31 as presented.
Is there a second to that? Badger is the second on that one. Any questions on the warrant? Okay, please vote.
There it is.
Yeah, I just have to...
You have to keep doing it. Yeah, it's crazy.
Okay, everybody voted in favor, thank you.
It'll work.
Let me do executive session of the 11th of September. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September the 11th? Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the minutes of September the 11th.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second on that one. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the minutes of 11th September. We had one abstention, everybody else voting in favor, thank you. And now we also have executive session on the 25th of September. Ms. Burgess moves it. Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second on that one. Is there a question on that motion? Okay, we can vote on that one. All right, we have one abstention, everybody else voting in favor. Our next item is a 30-year-old piece of equipment. I thought that was funny. Thirty years old. And we're finally getting rid of it. What is it?
What is it? Let's buy another one. It's probably obsolete as heck.
Yes, I...
We made it last.
Yes, it is a vision, a piece of equipment for vision, you know, when we're testing your vision.
Oh, okay.